Again, it is always a pleasure to see the general public, see the citizens of Dillon County come and sit in and hear and observe how your local representatives are serving you. Again, we welcome you, we welcome you. At this time, we're going to ask our administrator, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Rocky Barrett, if he will conduct the... If he will conduct the place at least.
Our pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will bow with me at this time, we will have the invitation that I've prayed, Father, we thank you today, we bless you once again for another opportunity to be in this earth. We appreciate you, Lord, for that that you're doing, that what you shall do. We just bless your holy name. And, Lord, we pray that you will bless this meeting, Lord, and help us to have clarity of thought, helping of speech, Lord, that your will be done according to your will and your law concerning government, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Before we ask for the approval of the agenda, I want to take liberty at this time to acknowledge gentlemen, couple of gentlemen from our federal government, from Senator Tim Scott's district, will be the A.D., Mr. D.
Thank you, sir. Good to be with you.
Thank you for being here, sir. And Alan Jenkins.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Also with us in order is from Congressman Tom Rice's office is Bill Crowder.
It's crowded.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Moving right along with the agenda, this time I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for an amendment to the agenda? And I'll specify if you're allowed to, what I'm asking for, ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session so we can discuss a legal matter before, right before adjournment, and also to strike 10 C from the agenda as it's no longer needed.
Okay, we ask for approval of the agenda with the changes that were forestated from our county attorney, executive session, and right at the end of the meeting, and also to strike in 10 Cs. Need a motion to that effect at this time.
I make that motion.
Second. Okay, in the discussion. All in favor? All right. This time need a motion to approve the minutes, 3/22/17, 3/38/17, in the call meeting. I make that motion, Mr. Chairman. We got a motion, need a second.
I second.
We got a second in discussion. All in favor? Okay, move right along with the agenda, number five, the administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be quick today, I've just got a couple of items. A, the Greer trip update, we traveled Monday, what I deem was a great trip, we met with our counterparts down at Greer, it was their mayor, their, I think they had someone from county council and administrators, things like that in their trip, but several of us went, we had some Glenn from the city went with us, we had our building inspector, our economic developer, but we went down just to make sure and learn and talk to make sure we don't fall into the same pitfalls that perhaps they didn't anticipate. So it was really a great trip, we saw how that facility's already grown immensely since some of you took a trip earlier, I think last year, but they're well above projections, which bodes well for us. Mind you, their footprint is about 40 acres, ours is about 140 acres, so that should indicate something there. County municipal, county slash municipal meeting, we gathered last Monday at the VNC, and we were well represented, I think we had everybody there, I think Mr. Moody had other obligations that night, but we had three representatives from Lakeview, two from Lata, so it was about four from Dillon, if I wasn't mistaken. We gave the mayors a chance to update, I updated what we're doing with the county. Representative Hayes led up with a report from the delegation, and I think everybody found that to be a worthwhile meeting, as we, it's gonna be more important than ever that we collaborate on many things as we receive the important and other big entities. We have a designated cleanup day, and, Mr. Chairman, this will take approval of county council, but what we've done, mopped up an ad, we're expecting visitors, and that's what this ad says, we're expecting company. Greer South Carolina's population in 2013 equal 27,000, by 2020, they're projected 35,000. That's an indicator that our demographics are gonna change, and what do we need to do? We've got to clean up this place. And Council on Holiday had initiated something here a little while back about the demolition, and we certainly intend to go forward with that, but we're gonna have a cleanup day on May 27th, if you guys approve. We keep the landfill open until 6:00 and the convenience sites, which they open at 6:00 anyway, but we're gonna get in our trucks and we're gonna travel the area on Saturday. We're gonna work Saturday, is what we're gonna do. I encourage the city, municipalities to do likewise, so what I'm asking for today is to allow us to be in operation that Saturday, I already spoke with Steve Moody and Charlie Brown, and they all think it's a good idea, but it's gonna be announced today, so to speak, we're gonna clean up that day, pending council's approval.
Thanks, sir.
All right, one last thing, Skip Road, you know, we've authorized to close the quals in there, I've sent the paperwork, so that should be forthcoming fairly soon. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Move right along with the new business, 6, mission statement for Dillon County.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we need this, we have, we've got a grant being submitted as we speak to the Duke Power Endowment Fund, and it's set to clean up our rivers. Melissa is writing this grant, and in order to do that, you have to have a mission statement. You have it in front of you, Jimmy Sue?
Mm-hmm.
This is something that I passed around to, you know, our group here to improve upon, borrowed some language from other counties, but let me read it to you, this will need some type of approval. Dillon County is eligible on 9/95 because we're committed to provide an exceptional service in a timely and proficient manner. We strive to create a vibrant, healthy environment for our citizens and employees through sound policymaking and prudent fiscal practices. That's what we would submit to county council to adopt, so that we may move forward and submit grants that require that.
Right, you need to get a motion to approve the mission statement.
I make that motion.
You need to get a second.
Second.
Okay, and then in discussions concerning the mission statement. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, move right along with the new business, this time we're gonna ask Mr. DJ Ween to come up, retirement, along with this Brad Cowd, and the other farmer in there, y'all come forth and give a present.
Yep.
I'm just coming over, and you leaving, and I hate it, because we've developed not only a work relationship, but very much a friend relationship, and you've been with us some time, and county council, and in fact, all of Dillon County is proud and very appreciative of your service, and we wanted more of this occasion by two things, first, recognizing you here in front of everyone, but also with this plaque, plaque. DJ Williams, an appreciation for your holy and faithful service, the citizens of Dillon County, as a firefighter for 37 years, I know him, 37 years old. Fine volunteer and fire engineer presented by Dillon County Council, so we all appreciate your service, and we also got another little token of appreciation that you will hope you'll remember your service here in Dillon County.
Appreciate you.
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 Thank you, gentlemen, I just wanna put a little plug in, uh, I started this ministry in 1984, and we have, we have been up to 9,200 plates in one outing. We don't do less than 4,500 plates every time we do. And also, we have, in the last time, the last count I had was 219 volunteers, but on that one outing we had with the 92, there was over 400 volunteers sign up to work. This is a God-given thing, that Jesus has worked through this thing to come in and to have this ministry to spread the way it is, and I, we just give God credit for the way this ministry has come along, and I wanna, I got my, two of my cohorts from Florence that came over, and I wanna thank them, but it's just a privilege for me to accept this through the Cooks of Price. Thank you, brothers. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, move right along, next on the agenda is gonna be recognizing the neighbors as the neighbors, going to ask Mr. Councilman Stevie Wright, if he'll come down with you. He's gonna do the presentation. Tom Rollins, he come up, please.
And the rest of the neighbors, have the neighbors.
Hey.
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 Tom and the rest of this crowd, they do a really great service in helping with neighbors, helping neighbors, they have helped a lot of people with sickness and disabilities, and they do a tremendous job in our community, just helping people out, and that's out of the genuine of their heart, and we appreciate what y'all do, we really thank y'all.
We're not as big as Henry, because Henry does a lot more in France than we do, we don't leave Dillon County, and we ain't never left Dillon County, don't intend to leave Dillon County, and so that's the way I was here, we do what we can in Dillon County.
We thank y'all.
We thank you.
We thank you.
Next on the Dillon, we Dillon High School Boys Basketball, North State Championship, this time we're gonna ask Councilman Earl Moody, who was a model teacher, not many years ago from Dillon High School, he served in the council, so we're gonna ask him to do the presentation.
Come on up, Dave.
It happened many years ago, this chairman was sitting in my class.
Well, it happened, but a few months ago, we were up here with the Wildcat Football Team, and now we're back with the Basketball Team, but the Basketball Team was in good hands. Guys, I'd like to congratulate y'all, and I'm gonna present you the plaque, and congratulate you on the job well done, and y'all keep it up, we like to go back every time. And, uh, do you have any more to follow up this time?
Yeah.
Anyhow, congratulations, y'all keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, you guys do good work.
Appreciate you.
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 The diesel, the last one, this is 72-inch cut, that first one for 9,000, that's a 60-inch cut, and that, the first one's a gas, the other two are diesel, one's I think a 60, the second's a 60-inch diesel, and the last, the 13,000, 72-inch diesel. Be a wider cut, no.
See, I know you cook some ball field sometimes, what is the old cut?
We cut the interstates, we did that, you know, inside the interstates, that's out at Harbor Creek, 34, and south of the border right there, we had to cut, because the tractor won't stand up on those, on those banks, or, we get all we can get with the tractor, but then you can't get all of them.
This gonna get the job done for you?
Yeah, I think, I, you know, I'm thinking, I don't know, and the diesel be better machine and a wider cut, because we got so much grass to cut out there, and then we cut a lot of other stuff besides that, but that's, that's what we cut.
These 13 and the 9, them same size, that's 60.
Do I now?
13,000 dollar one and 9,000 dollar one, 60.
No, let's see. The first two are 60 inches, the last was a 72-inch.
Hey, who did y'all get the prices from?
Um, I, Combi, uh, uh, Dela Prater.
You have a motion? Any more discussion? This time we ask a motion to purchase one of these all.
I make a motion about a diesel, 60-inch diesel, 13,000.
I said, hold on, hold on.
13,000. 13,000. 13,000.
Which one you, you looking at?
The last, I can't, I give her the paperwork off, the last one though, 17,000.
17,000.
Okay, well, that's the 72-inch then, and the 60-inch is 13,000, and both of those are gas, I mean diesel, and the first one's a gas 60.
Which one will suffice you concerning the measurement of the cut, this 60 or 70?
Well, the 72-inch would be better, and really what it's doing is just like the Combi tractor we had at Wickens, it kind of still, it's pretty much taking the place of that, too.
But the 60 would work, right? I mean, it ain't gonna make that big of a difference, is it?
Yeah, well, I mean, it would work, it would help, you know, it would.
But the width of it would help, so 95 on the hill, I think you have more width to stand up on the hill.
And be wider on the hill, sitting there, you know, on those banks and stuff like that.
So you say, we're all talking.
Yeah.
Jerry. Come on in, Jerry. So you saying you think the one that's wider is, would do better on the hill? It's hard standing on the hill, I mean, you know, it's, it's better on the hill.
Yeah.
So, all that, K, you gonna, I'm just gonna get the big and be.
Put a chain on it.
I make a motion, sir. You wanna make a motion for the 72?
Y'all make a motion about the 72.
All right, motion on the floor, the person 72-inch diesel, do we get a second?
A second.
All right, any more discussion? Move right along, all in favor? Thank you, sir. Right now referring 6G to attorney, to Barry.
It's my understanding that counts, at least some members of council on access to individual employee salaries, I can, I can give you two, I can tell you, give you my view on it after I've done some research on it, I, I don't, I don't believe that even the full council has, can access that specific information, that you can get a range, that you can also get the total for an apartment, what their salary is. However, we did ask for an opinion from the Association of Counties, and they disagree with me, they think you can't get a specific salary. I don't think anybody's, I think it's a bit of untested ground, so I, I think whatever you decide to do, however you vote, is fine, I understand that when you're preparing a budget, you need certain information to be able to prepare a budget, so you know what you can cut and what you can't cut, and so that's where, that's all I would have to say. My, my personal professional opinion is that it's probably not allowed, but we do have some opinions from Association of County attorneys, who have looked at one attorney who believes that it is.
Mr. Barrett, where do you come your conclusion, where do you get your research at?
Well, the, the, there is case law that's very clear that an individual council cannot get specific salaries, that they have to ask for the information through the frame of information act, and I'm not, I'm not sure how you can, if, if one council can't get it, I don't know how everybody can get a specific information, there's a reason that that information is not allowed to be released, except in increments of $4,000. Now, do I think it's gonna matter a whole lot, I mean, if you, if you, if you know an employee's getting 15 to 19,000 dollars, well, you know about what that employee's making, so I, I say that, but I say I don't think it makes.
Well, you mentioned it, but, but the county association, they disagree with what you said.
They disagree. Well, he didn't disagree, he just reached a different conclusion than I did. I disagreed with him, I think, what, what actually happened.
Well, I know in our past, with our previous attorney, we went through the same issue and, at the end of the day, he told us, you know, as long as the council all agreed, I mean, a majority agreed, that we could get it.
Well, I think that's, that's the safest way, if you vote on it, then.
We need that, be to make the budget and that.
Right, right. Been misled a lot in the past, yeah, budget stuff.
Yeah.
I, I know you're entitled to arrange and, and the, the budget, the salary budget for an entire department, no question about that, but if you all vote as a, as a whole council, or at least a majority council, to access this information, I think, I think it's fine, I don't.
The fact would be safe.
Yes.
And I wanna add to that, if I may, knowing the association of counties, if there's some way we came up short, I believe that they would be willing to come represent us, or send a representation, or to court or whatnot, to stand on what they believe, or what they, they play.
Well, I don't anticipate you having a challenge, but anyway, there's no, there's really no.
I'm just saying, in the event, that it would be challenged, I think we can get some, some help, one of the others. Okay, this time, we need a motion at this time.
I make a motion, we're going to see your silence.
Second. Got a motion on the floor and a second, end of discussions? We got no further discussion. Rodney, I make sure, and I, and I know I'm right with this, make sure that when we vote to do this, that we don't get nobody's private information, no social security numbers and that.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Chairman, if I may, how's that, how am I to distribute that, would it be executive session and the personnel, or, tell me the distribution method, or, or, or maybe I'm asking the attorney, because I, I'm not sure about that.
Just tell me what you think.
I, I think the same, I think the safest thing is to do it in executive session, but if you, if you're asking for a printout of these salaries, then there's no way to keep that private, once, once the printout's given, so it may be that we need to discuss a little bit further, after you vote on it, then you can perhaps discuss it further as we.
How we get it.
Right. I think, I think it's safe to do it in executive session, and just, if you have a question about salary, then you can be given that information, you know.
It's gonna work, so they can't hand out the salaries just when we look at it, and then we leave, get them to pay for that.
I think that would be, I think that would be fine.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. But here's what I think, and this is just my opinion, and you get the attorney, anybody in general public can file a formal request and get this information, or, they get paid Um, they get paid the type twelve dollars, they can get it by increments, I agree.
They can get it by, right.
Well, at that time, that document becomes a public document. I just don't think there's no way we can keep that document from being a public document. If they're paid the type twelve dollars, I just don't see how we can keep that.
I think we can only, yeah, if you make under fifty thousand, you have to release it in four thousand dollar increments. I don't think we can release it exactly.
I think once we see it and look at it in executive session, I don't see no reason to flirt around, just pass it back up. Let's go ahead and let's talk later. All right, got a motion and a second. All right, any more discussion? All in favor of getting the salaries? Any opposed? All right, move along, thank you, sir. All right, look, um, on the new business six H agreement, McLauren Lake circuit.
Mr. Chairman, you actually don't need to, uh, vote on this. There, there, the McLarens have re, have agreed to certain requests that we've made about the dam along McLauren Lake. And, um, with the assurance, the written assurances they've given us, um, the county's taken the sou- southern portion back into the county road, um, system, and have already begun to work on it, and will continue to do work on that for it. And that's just for information for you.
And we got both to show the nanny working for it.
We have the option to do both. You can, you can do both, you can do both, right.
Move along, just, we accept that as information. Sixth hour Florida rescue and party partner, Mr. Ray McLauren. You represent the attorney?
Yeah, Ray called and said he got tied up at the bug plant, he couldn't make it. We have a check here for ten thousand dollars that we're giving Florida Fire and Rescue. And, uh, we just want to say we appreciate what they do. They're a really good fire department in our county, that's not under the county, but they depend on some money from us and fundraisers they do. Mr. Tom, he helps out big with Florida with their fundraiser, and they do a great job in our community, and we just want to say thank you.
Move along. Recreation request.
Okay, in your pockets, the first one is, um, for Nisa B Manning Scholarship Fund Musical. It's going to be at, um, Open Door Community Church on May the sixth, and they are just asking for donations.
I mean, we'll take it out if I can, I'll say it.
Okay, next we have, um, the Word Church of Jesus Christ, um, they are asking, um, for a request or organization to give to twelve fifty or more. Um, but whatever you give, they will appreciate anything. Um, Archie has given a hundred, and Harold. Just come out your.
Recreation, my part. I got the same with recreation, Ray didn't.
Anybody else? Then we have one for Relay for Life, um, set for May the sixth, twenty seventeen, at Illinois Motor Speedway. Now, how we go to church, um, Relay for Life team would appreciate very much a donation of our team, of your, of your donation. Um, Stevie Christ has given a hundred. Is this coming out of your request?
Out of mine, out of mine.
And then we have, um, James Campbell would like for us to pay Russell Manning, um, for softball, for his Disco Manning softball team, in the amount of two hundred and ten dollars.
That'd be out of mine, that's right.
Yeah, that's coming out of yours. And before we finish, I have a thank you note from Ms. Josephine Gilchrist, um, a special note of thanks. She wants to thank Jack Scott and County Council, straight from our heart, the Fort Chapel Baptist Church.
Thank you.
And that's all I have right now.
All right, just tell me the motions to approve, recreational question. I'll make a motion. In a second.
A second.
Kid, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, move along with the gentleman. Next on the gentleman, knuckle boom truck, plain shell buckets, that was clamshell.
I had, I've kind of looked, trying to give a general idea of the cost of them. Uh, a new one's a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Uh, and I kind of discovered through the website, looked for used ones. Uh, the closest thing is about two thousand eleven International, it's sixty-nine thousand. It seemed like after you get about six, seven years old, it kind of starts to look right.
Where's it at? Has anybody went to look at it?
No, I haven't looked at it, just on the phone down there. Haven't picked out one yet.
Could we, Adam, could we set a limit that we can go up to, and maybe get our road supervisor to go make sure the equipment's all, well, is used equipment, you know? In other words, we say we go up to a certain amount, and then let the road supervisor go look at it, or let them bring it to you, and. Would that be a way to?
I think you're also going to need, you're going to need some.
Oh, yeah, some piece of used equipment, we need to look at it.
Yeah, we're going to need, um, to try to get prices on something comparable, like at least three, I think, for this amount. And it's going to be hard to do that, but I mean, I think you need to try to get some bids on something comparable to it, too. I think.
But I'm saying we can still get bids, but we just, we set a certain amount that we were up to, and we, you know, we ain't going over that, you know?
I think you need to have them, I think you need to have them in front of us. And some recommendations from the supervisor.
Mr. Eddie, we talked about this for maybe a month or so. You reckon you could have it another couple of weeks, and we might have a call meeting? A couple of weeks?
Anyway, if the council was keeping directions, what they want to go on.
He needed that reason. He gonna need directions. Well, we'll have, let's get something, okay, that's fine with you. Thank you. Just to turn out, thank you, I hear you right, you were saying you need to get three bids, and they need to be able to send it in, and we need to be able to be competitive, to show that we did reach our other sources.
Right, got you.
Can I, can I say something? I think we got a couple of mug graders down, don't we, Steve?
Mm-hmm. Two twelve eight mug graders.
I think we kind of need, maybe do something and get some mug graders going.
We got, we had five total, we're down to three now.
We got two more, is it, would it be maybe a good idea to maybe try to trade them in and maybe lease something, or, or get a, a door, that, something we can get running?
Yeah, well.
I think we need motor graders a little, little more.
They, they got some years on, they ninety-seven, ninety-eight motor graders. And we got a transmission going in one, and an engine going in the other one. And, I mean, you know, with all the roads we've got, it's, it kind of keeps us on the go with the three we've got to keep the roads up, or keep them up the best we can.
I think with the motor grader, we're going to probably have to figure, put that in our budget, but what we were kind of figuring on with this knuckle boom, was this auction we showed that junk can have down there, maybe using that money for the knuckle boom. But we're probably need to put that in our budget when we start buying the motor grader, we're talking about a lot of money.
How much money we making off?
Fifty thousand.
I didn't even, half of that, what you said, is.
Everybody using it.
Who's going to run it?
Well, we have to get the same with the motor graders. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Vice Chair, one thing about this FEMA money, we have been addressed, because I, I've heard loud and clear from this council, how important our Roads and Bridges Department is. So, we, once we, this FEMA money, I think that's, uh, something I'll present to y'all about getting where we need to be with our equipment in Roads and Bridges.
I'd like to say one thing, as a lot of people in here already know, I don't have to tell anybody in here, that when you start dealing with older equipment, you've got hydraulic pumps on the state vehicles. If one hydraulic pump go down on that knuckle boom, and you're talking almost a price of. It's very expensive, you start dealing with used hydraulic lines, all those got very replaced, you start talking about a lot of money. And when you buy a used one, you better have some of those what they're doing one day or day. They know what they're checking out, hydraulic lines, all the outwears, hydraulic cylinders, I'm sure you know, like, you're talking about a lot of company, I've been through this my whole life.
Appreciate that, Captain Scott, I think you were right, absolutely true. That, that's why it's necessary to make sure that somebody don't lay eyes on that equipment before we, before we purchase it. All right, anything further? Not, we're going to move on along, old business, Webster Rogers payment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we were not going to pay this bill until we brought, uh, full disclosure to council. Uh, we've asked, uh, Webster Rogers to appear before us, they have gave them itemized statement, and I think I forwarded that to all, all the council. Uh, but I think it's going, let me put it this way, I think it's going to be very much a challenge, uh, to get both of them to come and appear before council as we asked. I have not been able to get a date, so Richard, share with me what's the date and what's outstanding. I do think we're going to have to make some type of decision on, on this deal to get.
I'll, I'll kind of go, uh, what's on, prove what our contract called for, it was thirty-two thousand seven hundred. And that's kind of a general figure, and we're going to say they did extra work, they get paid for it. Uh, the extra work they said they've done is seven thousand dollars related to gas fees. And then it's another twelve thousand, some other work they did, I, I think it's based on some of the grants. So the total bills ended up being fifty-one seven, for the audit for two thousand sixteen. And what we've done, we've paid them twenty-five thousand, leads of balance owed, twenty-six thousand seven hundred.
You said that contract basically says that we do extra work.
Yeah, the way I think it's kind of literally written in there.
You have a copy of that? You have a view of that, buddy?
Yeah, I have.
Does it say that?
Yeah, I, it, yeah, it is a little bit submitted more than, what, what I guess you would expect.
If one of them maybe come back, I know there's two of them that work.
I, I feel like Greg can come back, but he's going to give you the same information they gave you before.
Yeah, I, I did ask Greg about it, he said, I can't, only thing I can do is kind of rehash part of it.
We've had this problem for like three years in a row, where they've added on, and added on.
I think we're in the last, I think, what was it, two-year contract, and we're in the second year.
It's three years, this, this is the third year.
Reach out to another source, and if they got a contract that says if they did extra work, that they're going to get paid, and they're entitled to it, wouldn't they be, Mr. Turner? I just think I wouldn't, I think moving forward, I'd use somebody else, and I'd make sure, and I looked at that contract real good before I agreed to it, you know, going forward.
At least prison caps on what makes.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, any motion to, uh, whether or not we're going to uphold and pay Webster Rogers? I made the motion, we go ahead and pay him, we through with, okay, with a second. All right, any further discussions? All right, all in favor? Thanks, sir. Financial report.
Um, this report, of course, going to be a little bit different, because we don't have anything in our root debt service and sinking fund accounts up before, but basically, right now, we've got three million nine hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars in our general fund. Um, we've still got the Anderson Brothers bank, saves account, it's got two hundred thousand in it. That account has been disrespected for the bond repayment into the sinking fund. So really, your top figure and bottom figure's the same, so the general fund, right now, we've got three point nine million.
Okay, I got a question to ask you, Mr. Garrett, that you probably don't know, uh, but if you don't know, you're, I appreciate it somewhere in the future that you could probably try to, try to find me an answer for it. I am concerned about taxes that should come out of the treasurer's office. Let me tell you why I'm concerned. They penalize you fifteen percent when you're late, and that I can understand. But then they charge you forty dollars a collectible fee. I don't think Dillon County has a tax collector, collector. My point is, and I know you probably can answer this, why is the treasurer's office charging me a collectible fee? When I bring this, when I bring the money up there, there's nobody knocking on my door, trying to collect any money from me, why is I'm charged at forty dollars? And you, and again, you probably don't, and I understand that. And my point, too, is this has been going on for some time in Dillon County for the treasurer's office. And if that's fine, I mean, if that's legal and fine, then I have no problem with it. But here's my next question, where's the, where's that fifteen percent going to, and where's that forty dollar collectible fee? What account is that in, or is all that just put in the general fund?
Actually, it's put in general fund.
But there, there should be some kind of way to tell, because when we, when we pass the budget, we're saying the budget's eighteen point something million, and we base that off base taxes that we receive. What about the fifteen percent penalty and the forty dollar collectible fee? At the time the budget's passed, that's not basing, that's not what we basing that on. So I, and you probably don't know, but I'm hoping that in the future, we could find out, that's where that money going, you know, fifteen percent and the forty dollar collectible. Over a period of time, looking at population of Dillon County, that's a lot of money that's somewhere, but I don't know, okay? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Garrett, I will go to you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Move along, Artis, business, old business, now Artis Street, second reading of Artis by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map of Dillon County, that we run a partial landowner's tax map notice, portion of eighty, partial ninety-two, sixty-eight, point sixty-two, eighty, portion of eighty, partial seventy, forty-nine, point six, ninety-eight, portion of sixty-eight, partial thirty, thirty-nine, point eighty-eight, previous property owner, E. Colenbry and Joseph Cowell, County property owner, tax law six. Quarter four, tax map number zero eight zero dot zero zero dot zero zero dot one one two one eight, is along west side of CSX, all railroad, from West Countryside Road to West Furfield Road, Dillon South Carolina, two thousand five hundred and six. Change from rural RU to general commercial, in order to operate the inland port. All right, the motion at this time.
Make the motion, uh, we have a second reading, uh, Jay Chang Gibson.
Got the motion. Got a motion to change it to general commercial, need a second. Second, all right, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Move along, second reading to amend Artis number twelve, zero seven, providing for the closing of a demolition dwelling unfit for human habitation.
Just need a motion, we went through this on the, on the first reading, and just an effort to clean up, and I think, uh, that council appointed me as the designated to, uh, to determine if this, I could like to.
Yeah, I can, I can give you, I can kind of sum up real quickly what the changes are. There's already an ordinance in place for the rest of this. The, uh, public officer designated under this ordinance, and is, accidentally gets a written complaint. And the written, the only thing that's changed in this first paragraph here, is that a written complaint, it can, it can only come from the sheriff of the county, or some, a citizen of Dillon County owning property within two miles of this, as well. The other amendment, section C is changed, and item two is added, which essentially allows the property owner, if they're unable to comply with what the county requires, it allows them, them to enter to a consent order with the county, so that the county, if they're unable to do it, they can, they can agree, the county will do the work, but it's still subject to the pay, to the fee schedule under the ordinance, which we'll get to in a minute, because that's changed as well. Section E, be amended, and it, it relates to the fee schedule. And this is a little different, we'll maybe have talked about, we can change it before third reading if y'all want to do it, but I'll tell you why, why we decided to do this. The, right now, it's, the actual cost is what's billed to the, to the, to the property owners, they're not able to clean up the property themselves. It was, it was the consensus of the folks in the workshop, although that's not binding at all, the, the thing that matters now is the vote by the council, to put a cap on that, and I changed, it was three hundred dollars, I've changed it to five hundred dollars. If y'all want to change that back, certainly feel free to. The reason I did that, is I think that's probably a more reasonable fee, and then secondly, if they enter into a consent order before we have to go through the trouble of the hearing, then they only, they would only be, they'd be capped at three hundred dollars. If they do it after we go through the trouble, trouble of the hearing, but before we have to go through appeals and all that process, then it's capped at four hundred. So it gives them some incentive to cooperate with us, so, so it would reduce the amount they're required to pay.
What do you do if you, what do you do if, if you make, you can't make contact with that property owner, what, how you going to demolish that property?
Now, if you can't, there, there'll be some other parties in interest, uh, that could be out there, for instance, when you have heirs property. You're going to have to, you'll have to go through the process of notifying them by publication.
But at, at the end, if you can't make contact with nobody, how you going to demolish the property?
Once you, once you go through the process that's required under the ordinance, and you make the proper notification, even through publication, you'll, you can get an order to, to demolish.
But if they want to consent, we'll go for three hundred dollars.
That's right, there's some incentives built, built in here to, for them to consent to it. And, and if they don't consent to it early, then it's another hundred dollars. If they want to go through the whole process, it's another hundred dollars. The, and then the only other thing that was amended is the phrase county building official is removed and substituted with a county administrator, or a county official designated by the county administrator.
Is there anything in there about commercial property?
No, this is only about residential property, and I'm looking at a commercial property, that's going to be a bigger issue.
Let me ask you a question, just out of curiosity. About when the county's got something locked down with taxes, and IRS has got, and you probably know the property I'm talking about. What, what are you, what are you going to do about a situation like that?
If you want to. Are those commercial properties that we're talking about? We don't have any way to address commercial.
I know you're checking into it, so.
But if, anybody who has an interest, lien holders, IRS, or whoever, you would check, you have to notify them on, if they don't respond, then you, you can get an order. But, but we don't have an order to set, address a commercial property yet.
All right, further the motion, that's second reading. I made a motion. Motion, that's second, you know, dwellers unfit, uh, need a second.
Second.
Any more discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Move along, second reading, Artis, Artis, right, the sort of title, twelve, chapter forty-four, the Coven Law, nineteen seventy-six, as a man, the execution and delivery of a fee and, of a role in taxing agreement, by, in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county.
And sponsored, and one of the more sponsors affiliated to provide for a fee and lieu, add for lieu and taxes incentive in certain special source revenue credits and other related matters.
This is our second reading on this, Mr. Chairman, it's Tony, right? You got any comments to add to, for council?
Uh, this is just, uh, um, one of the several projects that we talked about before. About a seven million dollar investment, and, uh, what you recommend to move forward is, uh...
King, anybody got any, any discussion, any further discussion?
This is second reading. Second reading, you have a copy of it. I think what discussion we're having is we'd like to get a copy of this agreement before we have third reading, so we can look at it in detail.
King, get the motion this time, pass second reading.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the second.
I'll say.
King, all in favor? In their post. Move right along, D, first reading, ordinance authorized execution delivery of a fee and lieu, a tax agreement by in between Dillon County South Carolina and a company, a company is known to the county at this time as Project Vanelle. With respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments and lieu taxes included, the division of certain special source credits and other amounts relating thereto.
Uh, this is by title only, this is a significant project, and, uh, we will have the details for you in the second reading, sir.
King, standing, the motion to pass first reading. I like that motion. Any second?
I say.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, move right along, E, first reading, ordinance to amend, and ordinance establishing a procurement code for Dillon County to provide a cap on county contracts not subject to council approval and to provide for local vendor preference. Motion, any, any discussion?
This is just, uh, at, at your direction from, I believe, our last reading, or maybe reading before, uh, to place a cap of five thousand dollars on any contracts that are not approved by the council. And, uh, also, uh, there was some ambiguity in the ordinance as to whether professional services fell into that cap or not, and the amended version, it will, uh, we'll do that. And also, we're gonna add a local vendor preference in there, and it will provide a full ordinance for you, uh, at the, at second reading, next meeting.
And now, if we, let's just, you know, say, uh, say it was a ten thousand dollar, and then, of course, it's been ten thousand dollars. And then, two weeks later, you get, like, another, ship another ten thousand to the same project, is this is gonna be, uh, capped for one project, can't keep, see what I'm getting at?
I do, but it's, it's per contract is the way it's, it's written right now, so if it's a project that one contract covers, then it's, the cap of five thousand will apply. If it's one which several contracts may apply, then it's, it would be per contract, but anything over five thousand dollars have to come to council to be approved, after that, what is the thing?
All right, any motion this time, pass first reading.
I made that motion.
Then, any second?
I say.
King, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, move right along, first reading, ordinance to amend, ordinance number zero nine dot zero three, and order to provide for, animal control provide for penalties for violation of the provisions, and order to add special policy for pit bulls within unincorporated areas of Dillon County. And that is my, that was one of my concerns, I think I've talked to, uh, Mr. Barry, back on last week, I had some colleagues concerned, uh, lady who, that next door neighbor had some pit bulls and, only restraint they had were they were on chain, but... A couple of them had got off the chain, and she was afraid for her safety, um, we do know in the past that there were some issues concerning pit bulls and taken, uh, a couple of lives in Dillon County. I was hoping that we could do like the city of Dillon does, that we could pass an ordinance that, uh, would directly cause people who have pit bulls to have that pit bull on cement slab and be fenced in. Uh, fencing alone without cement slabs can be an issue, for our concerns, because dogs have been known to dig their way through, through the dirt through those fences, but I feel that would be a little more safer if they, if they, animal owner with such dangerous dog, such other pit bull, or what have you, would have to have that pit bull on a cement slab, it'd be a little harder for them, it would be almost impossible for an animal to dig through cement and, and get out of the cage, you know what I'm saying? And I might have been, anybody have anything, concerning that?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we just gonna have a course reading, and you get the confirmation, or we come to Dillon or whatever, and bring it up. For the second reading, we...
I think he has that, don't you have?
I have it, I'm working, I'm working on the full body of the ordinance, sir.
I think with him, I'm, I'm just pit bulls or something.
All right, need a motion to pass to, uh, first reading.
I made that motion.
King, need a second?
Second.
King, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, move right along, ten resolution, eight, approving tax advantage, bond compliance policies and procedures for Dillon County South Carolina, other amounts relating thereto.
Uh, in a nutshell, when we issue, uh, G O bonds, the tax intent, um, this just resolution, that is, I guess federal government is requiring, that we follow requirements and make a tax. That's right.
Motion this time, pass the resolution.
They keep, McNair kept referring back to it, but when we look back through it, we never could find the, the actual resolution.
So, you say this is what to go, this requirement?
Uh, yes.
I, I think what we, what was done is in the ordinance itself, this language is in there, but they want a separate document that they can refer back to instead of having to put it in the ordinance every time.
Anything further? Motion this time, pass the resolution.
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, need a second?
I say.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Move right along, ten B, Fair Housing Resolution.
Shannon, um, we can cancel, said that we have to, that we have to do this order to get our grants.
What is, what about the language, is on that?
Yeah, there's a resolution in here.
Would you like me to read this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, we have to read this and pass it in order to, to what, Jim, this is?
In order for us to get the grants.
Okay, all right.
The money for the grants.
Fair Housing Resolution, April twenty seventeen, whereas the county of Dillon desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe and sound living environment, and, whereas the county of Dillon rejects discrimination on basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and/or familial status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in nineteen ninety-nine, whereas April is recognized nationally as Fair Housing Month, now therefore be resolved, the county of Dillon does designate April twenty seventeen as Fair Housing Month, adopted this specific day of April twenty seventeen. Of course, that will require your signature.
Okay, all right, this time, need a motion to approve Fair Housing Resolution. I made that motion, King, need a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, move right along. Mr. Attorney, you have some concerns about C.
C, C has been amended to, has been removed from that agenda.
Okay, C has been, all right, move on to C, to D, the resolution authorized execution delivery of an impurity inducement agreement and miller's rate agreement by in between Dillon County South Carolina property and that whereby, under certain conditions, Dillon County will execute a fee and lieu, a types of special source credit agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby, whereby that will make a available circuit rates against fee payments and reimbursement of investments in related qualified infrastructure provided for related matters.
Mr. Chairman, I, before you, I should have stopped before you read all that, the, uh, our attorneys has asked us to table this matter until the second reading, we're still negotiating, but we're very close, but it'd been pretty short the last hour.
Can you get a motion to table?
Make that motion.
King, need a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, table? We should have that table. All right, move right to level appointment, Dillon County Public, Private, Economic, and Dental Partnership Board, District Two, Jack Scott. So, the point, then, move right along, B, Dillon County Library Board, District Four, T F Fakin, Mr. Dickie Graham. My motion been made to put this, Dickie Graham on the library board, need a second?
I say.
King, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Move to C, P D Workforce Development Board, James Roberts, wise motion.
Make the motion with reference.
Motion to read real point, Mr. James Roberts, need a second?
I say.
King, further discussion? All in favor? Twelve council comments, and comment for the council before we adjourn. Season on this, we, we added one, we added one, all right, we adjourn. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank you for coming, we need a motion, this time to go on to executive session.
Make that motion.
It's second.